Please remain standing for a prayer to be led by Congressman Nigeta Duran.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Let us put ourselves in the presence of the Lord, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty God, Creator of heaven and earth, we thank you for your endless and unconditional love. God of the universe, at the dawn of creation, your spirit breathed on the waters, making them the wellspring of all holiness. The seasons follow your plan, and the tides rise and fall on your command. In both calm and storm, we remain faithful that you are with us. Lord Jesus, give us the grace to hear your voice and the strength to continue working for your kingdom in this time of pandemic. Do not allow us to be different for those who today suffer the loss of loved one or who suffer from the absence of work, but give us the courage to accompany and side with those who suffer violence or injustice. As the rainy days are ahead of us, there are those unfortunate to have shelter. There are those whose livelihoods might be affected. Before they begin to fear, let us be your instruments that we may open our hearts in generosity to all who need help in the coming days. In all things and in all times, help us to remember that even when life seems dark and stormy, you are in the boat with us, guiding us to safety. God of all nations, Father of humanity, we give you thanks for the freedom we exercise and for the many blessings of democracy that we enjoy. We ask for your protection and guidance for all who devote themselves to the common good, working for justice and peace within our beloved country. Now that the elections have come to pass, we lift up all our duly elected leaders and public servants, those who will serve as president, vice president, and as legislator. Those who will soon be appointed in government departments as we convene today as the National Board of Canvassures to count votes for the president-elect and vice president-elect. Guide the men and women of this gallant hall of congress. Leave them to you, oh Lord, so that you can be the foundation of everything they will do for this country. Help them set aside their differences so that they may all work for the common good. Heal us from these differences and unite us. Oh Lord, remind and provide us with a common purpose, dedication, and commitment to achieve freedom, justice, and truth in the years ahead for all people and especially those who are most vulnerable in our midst. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Representative Taduran. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members. Abante. Abaya. Abelenosa. Abu. Abwegsaldivar. Abunda. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Advincola. Agabas. Agarau. Aglipay. Aginaldo. Albano. Almario. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Sinaro. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amanti Matba. Amatong. Angara. Aragones. Arbison. Arenas. Arroyo. Atienza. Omentado. Babasa. Agatzing. Balindong. Banesongrales. Barba. Barber's. Aronda. Barzaga. Vasco. Pautista Bandigan. Pautista Lim. Belmonte. Benitez. Bernos. Beazon. Biliones. Viron. Bolilia. Bondo. Bordado. Bravo. Brosas. Bulut. Bustos. Kabatbat. Kabochan. Kabredo. Cagas. Calderon. Calixto. Caminero. Campos. Canama. Cognan. Cardema. Gari. Castillo. Casto Frans. Crasto Fredinil. Cayetano Alan. Cayetano La Arni. Celeste. Chato. Chipeco. Chunggalaw. Coangelica. Coelisaldi. Culantes. Crisologo. Kua. Kwareisma. Cueva. Juliamat. Nagoo. Dalipe. Dalo. Daza. Jesus. De Venecia. Defensor Lawrence. Defensor Michael. De Los Santos Alfred. De Los Santos Edward. De Los Amontalia. De Maforo Abdullah. De Maforo Khalid. Duavit. Tujali. Doterte. Di Faustino Ino. Di Faustito Michael. Di Ian. Epcas. Ecleo. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Ericel. Hermita Buahin. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Farinyasria. Farinyas Ludes. Fernandez. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Frasco. Pentebelia. Gaite. Garbin. Garcia Jose Enrique. Garcia Pablo John. Garcia Vincent. Garin Janet. Garin Sharon. Gasataya. Achalian. Gato. Heron. Go Ed. Go Mark. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Aurelio. Gonzalez Nepali. Gonzalez Sandro. Coriseta. Guico. Gulyas. Guya. Jaresco. Ataman. Hernandez. Herrera Di. Pofor. Halos Os. Javier. Imenes. Coelisa. Co Wilton. Kong Hun. Labat Labat. Lacson. Lacson Noel. Lagman. Lagon. Lara. Lasatin. Leation. Ligarda. Lim. Lim Kaitsong. Lopez. Loyola. Lusotan. Makapagal Arroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Mangawang. Angundadatu. Marcoletta. Mariano Hernandez. Mariño. Marquez. Martinez. Matba. Matugas. Mendoza. Momo. Nativinat Nagaño. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Pidel. Nolasco. Nunies Malayaon. Juan Minal. Olivares. Ong. Ordanes. Ortega. Uanyodison. Pakia Alberto. Pakia Rogelio. Padjernos. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Peña. Itchay. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Puno. Kimbo. Radasa. Remiresato. Remulia. Revilia. Reyes. Rivera. Robes. Rodriguez. Román. Romero. Romualdes Martin. Romualdes Seda. Romaldo. Romulo. Roque. Sacdalan.[526.55]
Secretary General.
House Bill 10831, postponing the December 2022 Barangay and Sanggunean Kabataan elections to December 5, 2025, by Representative Cardemah.
What is that?
Forty-one, forty-one.
To the Committee on Sufferings and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 10832, mandating all executive departments, bureaus, offices, agencies, and instrumentalities, including G O Cs and G F Is, to implement streamlining activities in order to raise at least five percent in budgetary savings to bolster response efforts against COVID-19, by Representatives Kaitano Allen, Kaitano Lorni, Villia Fuerte, Abu, and Fernandez.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 10833, renaming the Ninoi Aquino International Airport as the Manila International Airport, by Representative Cardemah.
To the Committee on Suffering and Electoral Reforms. To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 10835, further protecting the integrity of the right to suffrage by amending the Omnibus Election Code, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committees on Suffering and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 10836, granting discount privileges to medical frontliners, by Representative Cabotchan.
To the Committee on Health.
Resolutions. House Resolution 2482, urging the House Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization to inquire on the alleged anomalous joint venture agreement between the Gimba Water District and Pamana Water Corporation, by Representatives Gaite, Zarate, and Culyamat.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2483, urging the House Committees on Ways and Means, Labor and Employment, Economic Affairs, Micro, Small, and Medium Enterprises Development, and other appropriate committees to assess ways to incentivize green industries with the end in view of providing more jobs and promoting sustainable livelihood, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2484, directing the House Committee on Basic Education and Culture to inquire on the reported phishing scam affecting the L B P payroll accounts of teachers, by Representatives Castrofrans, Zarate, Gaite, Culyamat, Brosas, and Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2485, congratulating the Philippine Women's Football Team for securing the country's first-ever appearance at the FIFA World Cup, by Representative Brosas.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 2486, congratulating the Philippine Women's Football Team for their historic qualification in the FIFA Women's World Cup, by Representative Elago.
To the Committee on Sports and Development.
House Resolution 2487, commending Mark Magzayo for his exceptional feat in winning the W B C Featherweight Title on January 23, 2022, in Atlantic City, New Jersey, by Representative Villia Fuerte.
To the Committee on Youth and Development.
House Resolution 2489, commending and expressing gratitude to the members of the composite teams in L G Us for community mitigation of COVID-19 nationwide for their indispensable role and significant contributions and sacrifices during this COVID-19 pandemic, by Representatives Defensor Michael Crisologo Castello and Reyes.
To the Committee on Local Government and the Committee on Health.
House Resolution 2490, commending and congratulating the P N P D E G, PIDEA, ISAF, and NICA for the successful conduct of the Anti-illegal Drugs Campaign and their unrelenting efforts in curbing illegal drugs trade in the country, by Representative Bustos.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Resolution 2491, urging D A D T I and S R A to implement programs that will protect and increase the yield and efficiency production of the sugar industry and discourage the importation of sugar, by Representative Zubiri.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Resolution 2492, urging D O H to study, consider, examine, and evaluate the effectiveness of the pneumococcal conjugate vaccines pre-qualified license and recommended by the W H O, by Representatives Laxon, Salvador Tambunting, Panotes, Robes, and Singzon.
To the Committee on Health.
House Resolution 2493, directing the Committee on Information and Communications Technology to investigate the alleged rampant cyber attacks against media outfits, by Representatives Zarate, Gaite, and Culyamat.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2494, urging the House Committee on Human Rights and the Committee on Civil Services and Professional Regulation to investigate the series of attacks against employees of the Bureau of Customs, by Representatives Gaite, Zarate, and Culyamat.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2495, urging the House Committee on Agriculture and Food to investigate the importation of 200,000 empty sugar amidst the height of sugar harvest season, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution. House Resolution 2496, urging the Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the arrest of community doctor and human rights defender Marian Natibidad Marian Castro by San Juan Police, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2497, strongly urging the House Committee on Labor and Employment to immediately investigate the harassment and intimidation of A S P against union leaders of Alcohol Field Workers Union and Nesperia Philippines Inc., Workers Union, by Representative Brosas.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2498, expressing profound condolences of the House on the demise of Attorney Ricardo Puno Junior, by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2499, urging the House Committee on Natural Resources to condemn and investigate the violence and attacks against Masunggi geore- reserve forest rangers, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2500, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the killing of Lumad schoolteacher Chad Boa Juraine Newjo the Second, community health worker Elgin Balonga, and two other individuals in Andap Nubataan, Davao de Oro, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, Gaite, Brosas, Castrofrans, and Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2501, directing the D O T R to provide another three-year transition period starting January 1, 2022, up to December 31, 2024, for P U V owners and operators to fully comply with the requirements of D O T R Department Order Number 2017-011, by Representative Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Resolution 2502, urging the national government to provide flights for Hong Kong-based COVID-positive OFWs and to utilize the Manila-Kereno Grandstand Field Hospital as a quarantine facility where they can be monitored and cared for, by Representative Abante.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Resolution 2503, urging the Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the arrest of Agnes Messina, Makabayan-Kagayan Valley Regional Coordinator in Apari-Kagayan, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, Gaite, Brosas, Castrofrans, and Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2504, urging the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization to probe the concerns of S S S pensioners on the problematic reimplementation of the A C O P program, by Representatives Zarate, Culyamat, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2505, expressing the deepest sympathies of the House to the family of Honorable Angel M. Carloto, former representative of the Third Legislative District of Samangga del Norte during the Eighth, Ninth, Tenth, and Twelfth Congresses, by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2506, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Florentio T. Flores Junior, former representative of the Second Legislative District of Bukidnon during the Fifteenth, Sixteenth, and Seventeenth Congresses, and the father of Representative Jonathan Keith T. Flores, by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2507, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Carlos O. Cuhuango, representative of the First Legislative District of Tarlac during the Seventeenth and Eighteenth Congresses, and the Fourth Legislative District of Negroes Occidental during the Eleventh, Twelfth, and Thirteenth Congresses, by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2508, congratulating Ernest John E. J. Uy Obiena for winning the gold medals in the poll vote events in the Orland Cup held in Lodz, Poland, and the Orland Copernicus Cup held in Torun, Poland, by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2509, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Ambalang Ausalin, a national living treasurer and a recipient of the 2016 Gawad sa manilikha ng bayan, by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2510, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the illegal search, arrest, and detention of peasant leader and anak pawis partylist campaigner Victoria Bikbik Tumabiao in Iloilo, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2511, urging the DEP to immediately explore solutions aimed at supporting private schools during the COVID-19 pandemic to avert an education crisis among Filipino learners, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Basic and Education Culture.
House Resolution 2512, urging PAG Corps, in light of the disappearance of 31 cockfighters, to immediately suspend online cockfighting operations, popularly known as E-Sabong, until concrete measures can be put in place to guarantee the safety of E-Sabong personnel and participants, by Representative Abante.
To the Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Resolution 2513, urging the House Committee on Agriculture and Food to investigate the drop in wholesale prices of select agricultural products amid rising oil and fertilizer prices and its effect on the livelihood of local farmers and consumers, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2514, urging the O T R and D O E to implement programs that will protect the transport industry from the ill effects of rising fuel prices, by Representative Zubiri.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Resolution 2515, urging the O T R and L T F R B to fast-track the processing of fuel subsidy for public utility drivers to ease the effects of massive increase in fuel prices, by Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Resolution 2516, urging the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources and other appropriate committees of the House to immediately inquire on the implementation of laws, orders, and other rules governing the utilization of public lands within the jurisdiction of the Laguna Lake Development Authority, by Representative Cabatbat.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2517, urging a whole-of-government, whole-of-nation approach to avert a social and economic crisis brought about by the surging prices of commodities and fuel during the COVID-19 pandemic, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Resolution 2518, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to investigate the failed shooting of journalist Edwin Kitasol, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2519, urging the House Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability to inquire on COA report findings of billions of unutilized Bayanihan two funds, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2520, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and conduct an investigation on the shooting of Larry Villegas, transport leader and Bayan Munap partylist coordinator in General Santo City, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2521, requesting the appropriate committee to conduct an investigation on the practice of filing false criminal complaints, by Representative Teduran.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2522, expressing the profound sympathy and sincere condolences of the House on the death of Tarlac First District Representative, Honorable Carlos Charlie O. Cuhuango, and honoring his contributions to the country, by Representative Lopez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2523, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to investigate the harassment and illegal arrest of Bakoor Cavite campaign volunteers, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, Gaite, Brosas, Castrofrans, and Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2524, imploring the appropriate government agencies to immediately suspend the imposition of fuel excise tax due to the alarming rate of increase in fuel prices, by Representative Gasataya.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Resolution 2525, expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Tarlac First District Representative Rep. Carlos Charlie Cuhuango on February 22, 2022, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2526, directing the Committee on Labor and Employment to investigate the non-payment of wages to the project-based employees of the Advanced Engineering and Technology Solutions, a service contractor of PLDT Incorporated in Ilocos Norte, by Representatives Farinias Ria and Farinias Rudis.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2527, urging Dole to promote the availability of work-from-home and similar working arrangements to protect Filipinos' economic welfare and right to health, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Resolution 2528, urging the House to condemn and investigate the intrusion of a Chinese naval vessel in the Sulusi, by Representatives Zarate, Culyamat, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2529, urging His Excellency President Rodrigo Roa Duterte to intervene in the fuel crisis faced by the country and support proposals to temporarily suspend excise taxes on petroleum products, by Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Resolution 2530, honoring the life and legacy of Mrs. Lydia S. Kimbo and expressing the sincerest sympathies and profound condolences of the House on her passing last March 19, 2022, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2531, directing the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Ecology to inquire on the natural and man-made causes of fish kill incidents in Laguna de Bay amidst the pandemic, by Representative Cabatbat.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2532, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to inquire on the arrest of Lumad County Leader Edwin Uribawon Senior in Arakan, North Cotabato, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2533, directing the Committees on Agriculture and Fisheries Resources, Agriculture and Food, and Natural Resources to conduct a joint inquiry on the socioeconomic impact of D A's Fisheries Administrative Order Number 264 to the crablet gatherers in Guba, Torsogón, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2534, directing the Committees on Agriculture and Fisheries Resources, Agriculture and Food, and Natural Resources to conduct a joint inquiry on the socioeconomic and environmental impact of the Balud del Norte Cotanado Cocon Coastal Road and Shore Protection Project in Guba, Torsogón, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2535, calling on D B M to immediately release the cash subsidy to assist Filipinos amidst the rising gas prices, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Resolution 2536, calling on the Department of Migrant Workers and D F A to ensure the safety of OFWs amidst the Russian-Ukraine conflict, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Resolution 2537, calling for peace in Russia, Ukraine, and Europe, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Resolution 2538, urging COMLEC, D O E, DEP, and other national government agencies and stakeholders to ensure and fully commit to 100% brownout-free schools to safeguard the integrity of the 2022 national and local elections, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Suffering and Electoral Reforms.
House Resolution 2539, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Antonio Eduardo Bermejo Naturra, former representative of the Second Legislative District of Samar during the Eleventh and Twelfth Congresses and retired Associate Justice of the Supreme Court, by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2540, calling for an investigation on alleged security breach involving COMLEC and Smartmatic, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2541, calling on COMLEC to respect the rights of private property owners in the COMLEC's implementation of election laws, rules, and regulations, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committees on Suffering and Electoral Reforms.
House Resolution 2542, commending the COMLEC for hosting the signing of peace covenants all over the country, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committees on Suffering and Electoral Reforms.
House Resolution 2543, requesting the appropriate committee to investigate on the alleged illegal profiteering of some insiders of Lamba who act as go-betweens or agents in loan applications, by Representative Teduran.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2544, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the red tagging of Ilocosur officials Santa Vice Mayor Jeremy Jesús Bueno III and Kabugao Councilor Randy Kinaud, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2545, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the arrest of Elmer Foro, Bayan Panay Secretary General in Cabanatuan, Iloilo, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2546, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the interview conducted by S M N I with convicted kidnapper and human rights violator Jovito Palparan Junior while under detention at the Nubilibid Prison, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2547, commemorating the 136th birth anniversary on May 10, 2022, of Brother Felix Y. Manalo, the messenger of God from the Far East and the first executive minister of the Iglesia de Cristo, by Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2548, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Antonio Eduardo Bermejo Naturra, former representative of the Second Legislative District of Samar during the Eleventh and Twelfth Congresses, former Solititer General and retired Associate Justice of the Supreme Court, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2549, condemning the recent incidents of rioting and pandem and calling for an investigation in relation thereto, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2552, urging the D O T, other national government agencies, and L G Us to magnify and consolidate efforts aimed at supporting the full recovery of the Philippine tourism sector, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Resolution 2553, urging the House Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability to investigate unpaid estate taxes of the Marcus family amounting to an estimated 203 billion pesos, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2554, urging the House Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reform to investigate the chaotic and disorganized election system in Hong Kong and other countries on the first day of overseas voting for the 2022 national elections, by Representative Gaite, Culyamat, and Zarate.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2555, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the arrest of Isabelo Buting Adviento, peasant leader and anak pawis fourth nominee in Bayombong, Nueva Viscaya, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, Gaite, Brosas, Castrofrans, and Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2556, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the arrest of Iglesia Filipina Independiente volunteer Aldim Yáñez, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2557, urging immediate support for the recovery of L G Us affected by the tropical storm Agaton and reiterating a whole-of-nation approach to mitigate the impacts of climate change-driven natural disasters, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Resolution 2558, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the arrest of elderly peasant organizers Maria Teresa Buscano, Erlinda David, and Evelyn Munoz in Mawake, Mabalacht, Pampanga, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2559, urging the Committee on Ecology and Committee on Health to conduct an urgent inquiry on the impacts of Aboytis-owned Thermavisayas Inc., T B I Coal Fired Power Plant on the environment and surrounding communities in Toledo City, Cebu, including its black dust emissions and noise pollution, by Representative Brosas.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2560, urging D O H, D O T, L G Us, and private stakeholders to jointly develop and implement measures towards preventing a surge in the incidence of COVID-19 in our country's tourist destinations, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health and the Committee on Tourism.
House Resolution 2561, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to condemn and investigate the shooting incident and attacks against Lumad of Quezon, Bukidnon, during the April 19, 2022 visit of presidential aspirant Leody Callo di de Guzman, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2562, urging the House Committee on Transportation to investigate the window hour scheme for provincial buses, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2563, commending the Toril Community Cooperatives for its exemplary contribution to community building and cooperative development, by Representative Kanama.
To the Committee on Cooperative Development.
House Resolution 2564, directing the Committee on Human Rights to investigate the shooting incident against the members of the Manobo Polangyon tribe in Butong, Quezon, Bukidnon, during the visit of presidential candidate Leodegario Callo di de Guzman on April 19, 2022, by Representative Cabatbat.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2565, urging the House Committee on Human Rights to inquire on the disappearance of Dante Gatdula, a Robredo People's Council volunteer in Candelaria, Quezon, by Representatives Culyamat, Zarate, and Gaite.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2566, urging B S P to remove the divisive Ninoi Aquino image in the 500 peso bill and replace it with a more nationalistic symbol for the unity of the country, by Representative Cardemah.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Resolution 2567, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Camarines Norte Second District Representative Marisol Toots Sipanotes, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2568, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of former Marin Duque representative attorney Regina Gina O. Reyes Mandanas, by Representative Salvador Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2569, supporting the establishment of a multi-actor partnership on the enhancement of climate and disaster risk financing and insurance in the Philippines, by Representative Chatto.
To the Committee on Climate Change.
House Concurrent Resolution 25, approving the sale, transfer, or assignment of the controlling interest in Philippine Collective Media Corporation to Golden Peregrine Holdings Incorporated, by Representative Romualdo.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Message from the President, veto message dated April 14, 2022, of President Duterte on the Consolidated Enrolled Senate Bill 2395 and House Bill 5793, eradicating mobile phone, internet, or electronic communication aided criminal activities mandating for this purpose registration of all SIM cards for electronic devices and social media accounts.
To the Committee on Rules.
Veto message dated April 27, 2022, of President Duterte on the enrolled House Bill numbers 4958, 4957, 7018, and 7447, establishing a CHED provincial office in Negroes Occidental, Samangga, Cebugay, Ilocos Norte, and Davao Oriental, respectively.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages from the Senate, message dated January 31, 2022, informing the House that uneven date the Senate approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2152 and House Bill 10301.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated January 31, 2022, informing the House that uneven date the Senate approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 1241 and House Bill 3255.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022, informing the House that the Senate uneven date passed Senate Bill 2494 and 2488, in which it requests the concurrence of the House.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022, informing the House that uneven date the Senate approved Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 643 and House Bill 9458.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022, informing the House that uneven date the Senate approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill 5793 and Senate Bill 2395.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022, informing the House that uneven date the Senate approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 1155 and House Bill 10610.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022, informing the House that uneven date the Senate approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2124 and House of Senate Bill 2124 and House Bill 10698.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on even date the Senate approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 78 and Senate Bill 2094.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on even date the Senate approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2449 and House Bill 10658.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on even date the Senate approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2421 and House Bill 10701.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on even date the Senate approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2365 and House Bill 8818.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on January 31, 2022, the Senate designated Senators Angara, Villanueva, Gachalian, Marcos, and Pangilinan as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2124 and House Bill 10698.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on January 31, 2022, the Senate designated Senators Angara, Gordon, Go, Binay, and Ontiveros as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2421 and House Bill 10701.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on January 31, 2022, the Senate designated Senators Zubiri, Gachalian, Tolentino, and Drilon as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2493 and House Bill 9884.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on January 31, 2022, the Senate designated Senators Gachalian, Angara, Villanueva, Po, and Drilon as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2485 and House Bill 10308.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on January 31, 2022, the Senate designated Senators Angara, Po, Binay, Revilia, and Pangilinan as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2365 and House Bill 8818.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on January 31, 2022, the Senate designated Senators Ontiveros, Marcos, Cayetano, De La Rosa, and Gachalian as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2209 and House Bill 10703.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on January 31, 2022, the Senate designated Senators Ontiveros, Marcos, Binay, Villanueva, and Villar as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2449 and House Bill 10658.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House that on January 31, 2022, the Senate designated Senators Villar, Marcos, Revilia, Recto, and Drilon as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2425 and House Bill 10696.
The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 2, 2022 informing the House the Senate on even date reconsidered its approval on third reading and withdrew from the House House Bill Numbers 99429934.
The Committee on Appropriations. Oh, don't know. The Committee on Rules.
Message dated February 3, 2022 informing the House that on February 2, 2022, the Senate designated Senators Villar, Po, Binay, Marcos, and Pangilinan as conferees to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 2494 and House Bill 6134.
The Committee on Rules.
Communications. Letters, emails, and memorandum from several municipal mayors, city mayors, provincial governors, and government officials informing the House on their reports on fund utilization and status of programs, projects, activities, implementation relative to LGSF in Bayanehan granted cities, municipalities, and provinces for certain months of 2020, 2021, and 2022.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated November 17, 2021, and February 10, 2022 of the BIR Commissioner submitting to the House a copy of their consolidated monthly report of disbursements for October 2021 and budget and financial accountability reports as of December 31, 2021.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
Letter dated December 3, 2021 of the SSS President and CEO submitting to the House a copy of their report on 2020 SSS consolidated investments.
The Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
Memorandum dated December 3, 2021 of the OPAP Secretary informing the House that OPAP's financial accountability reports for the month of November 2021 were submitted to the Unified Reporting System and posted on the OPAP's official website.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated December 16, 21, 28 of 2021, February 2, 4, 10, 15, 16, 23, and 28, 2022 of the BSP Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services Deputy Director transmitting to the House duly certified copies of certain BSP issuances.
The Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated December 17, 2021 of the COA Chairperson furnishing the House with copies of the annual audit reports on certain government agencies.
The Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
Letters dated December 20, 2021, and January 28, 2022 of the DOTR Office of the Undersecretary for Finance transmitting to the House certain financial reports for the months of November and December 2021.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated December 24, 2021 of the DOTR Office of the Undersecretary for Finance transmitting to the House a copy of their summary performance monitoring report as of November 30, 2021.
The Committee on Transportation.
Letter dated January 4, 2022 of the NTF LCAC National Security Advisor, Director General, National Security Council, and Vice Chairperson submitting to the House a copy of their report on fund utilization and status of program project implementation of the local government support fund, support the barangay development program as of December 27, 2021.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 17, 2022 of the BIR Commissioner submitting to the House a copy of their report on the implementation of RA 11590 for the period October 9, 2021 to December 31, 2021.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
Letter dated January 18, 2022 of the DBP President and CEO notifying the House that certain budget and financial accountability reports for the quarter ending December 31, 2021 were posted on their website.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 20, 2022 of the COA Chairperson furnishing the House with a copy of their annual audit report on the Iligan Coconut Industries Incorporated for the years ending December 31, 2019, and 2020.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 25, 2022 of the DOSD Advanced Science and Technology Institute, OIC submitting to the House copies of certain reports as of December 31, 2021.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 27, 2022 of the BSP Governor submitting to the House a copy of their report to Congress on public sector foreign borrowings approved by the BSP in the fourth quarter of 2021 and the full year 2021.
The Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Memorandums dated January 27, 2022, and February 7, 2022 of the OPAPRU Secretary informing the House that the OPAPRU's financial accountability reports for the month of December 2021 and January 2022 were submitted to the Unified Reporting System and posted on their official website.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 27, 2022 of the Land Bank of the Philippines President and CEO submitting to the House a copy of their report on the utilization of funds for the unconditional cash transfer program, fourth quarter CY 2021.
The Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated January 28, 2022 of the DND Assistant Secretary for Financial Management forwarding to the House copies of their reports on the actual quarterly income collection and utilization as of December 31, 2021, and on the quarterly estimated collection and utilization for the quarter ending March 31, 2022 of the Veterans Memorial and Historical Division of the Philippine Veteran Affairs Office.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 28, 2022 of Vitaliano and Aguirre II, Napolcom Commissioner, Vice Chairman and Executive Officer, furnishing the House a copy of their 2021 Napolcom Annual Report.
The Committee on Public Order and Safety.
Letter dated January 28, 2022 of the Corporate Affairs Group National Economic and Development Authority Undersecretary notifying the House that their quarterly physical report of operations or budget accountability report number one as of December 31, 2021 was submitted through the DBM Unified Reporting System and uploaded to their Transparency Seal webpage on January 28, 2022.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 31, 2022 of the SSS President and CEO submitting to the House a copy of the 2021 results of operations of the SSS.
The Committee on Government, Private Enterprises, and Privatization.
Letter dated January 31, 2022 of the Tariff Commission Finance, Management, and Administrative Service Acting Director III informing the House that certain monthly financial accountability reports for the quarter ending December 31, 2021 were posted on their website.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated February 2, 2022 of the Office of the President Malakanyang Executive Secretary to the Honorable Senate President Vicente C. Soto III, copy furnished the Honorable Speaker Lord Alan J. Q. Velasco transmitting the letter of President Duterte urging the prioritization of the Senate's concurrence to the Regional Comprehensive Economic Partnership Agreement.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
Letter dated February 2, 2022 of the Office of the President Malakanyang Executive Secretary to the Honorable Senate President Vicente C. Soto III, copy furnished the Honorable Speaker Lord Alan J. Q. Velasco transmitting the letter of President Duterte certifying the necessity of the immediate enactment of Senate Bill Numbers 2494 and 2488.
The Committee on Rules.
Email dated February 8, 2022 of the Municipal Government of Carmen, Shergao del Sur Municipal Budget Officer forwarding to the House copies of their reports on the utilization of the 20% component of internal revenue allotment for development projects for the second, third, and fourth quarters of 2021.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated February 8, 2022 of the NIA Administrator submitting to the House a copy of their calendar year 2021 fourth quarter progress report of NIA Comprehensive Agricultural Reform Program Irrigation Component for Mindanao Sustainable Agrarian and Agriculture Development Project.
The Committee on Agriculture and Food.
Letter dated February 11, 2022 of the NYC Chairperson and CEO informing the House that their report on the utilization of the Sanguneang Kabataan Mandatory and Continuing Training Fund FAR1 Statement of Appropriations, Allotments, Obligations, Disbursements, and Balances as of the quarter ending December 31, 2021 was posted on their website Transparency Seal on February 11, 2022.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated February 14, 2022 of the Kalapan Water Works Corporation President submitting to the House a copy of their 2021 operational report.
The Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated January 11, 12, 24, March 3, 4, 8, 11, 21, 24, 29, April 1, 6, 8, 18, 25, and 26, 2022 of the Office of the President Malakanyang Executive Secretary transmitting two original copies of the Republic Act Numbers 11643, 11602, to 11608, 11612, 11642, 11646 to 11681, 11702 to 11705, 11682, 11683, 11689, 11690, 11692 to 11695, 11697, 11698, 11700, 11707, 11691, 11696, 11699, and 11708, which were signed by President Duterte.
To the Archives.
Committee Reports. Report Number 1452 of the Committees on Local Government Appropriations and Ways and Means on House Bill 10729. Report Number 1453 of the Committees on People's Participation Appropriations and Ways and Means on House Bill 10799. Report Number 1454 of the Special Committees on Senior Citizens and Persons with Disabilities on House Resolution 2488. Report Number 1455 of the Committees on Health and Appropriations on House Bill 10800. Report Number 1456 of the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs on House Bill 10802. Report Number 1457 of the Committees on Metro Manila Development and Transportation on House Bill 10811. Report Number 1458 of the Committee on Veterans Affairs and Welfare on House Resolution 2435. Report Number 1459 of the Committee on Foreign Affairs on House Bill 10814. Report Number 1460 of the Committee on Energy on House Bill 10823. Report Number 1461 of the Committee on Natural Resources on House Bill 10824. Report Number 1462 of the Committee on Justice on House Resolution 1666. Report Numbers 1463 and 1464 of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution Numbers 2550 and 2551. Report Number 1464 of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution 2551. Report Numbers 1465 and 1467 of the Committee on Cooperatives Development on House Resolution Numbers 2368 and 2463. Report Number 1466 of the Committees on Natural Resources and Appropriations on House Bill Number 10834.
Therefore mentioned reports are referred to the Committee on Rules.
Additional Reference of Business Resolutions. House Resolution 2570 Resolution congratulating and commending the Philippine delegation in the Expo 2020 Dubai for the Bangkota Philippines Pavilion and its related activities by Representatives Velasco de Venesia, Arroyo, Legarda, and other members.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2571 Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Mr. Eduardo Roy Jr. by Representatives Velasco de Venesia, Arroyo, Legarda, and other members.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2572 Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Ms. Gloria Sevilla by Representatives Velasco de Venesia, Arroyo, Legarda, and other members.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2573 Resolution congratulating Kasama for being the first Filipino restaurant to be awarded a Michelin Star by Representatives Velasco de Venesia, Arroyo, Legarda, and other members.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2574 Resolution congratulating and commending the Filipino artists and creatives behind the film Leonor Will Never Die, led by its director, Ms. Martika Ramirez Escobar, for winning the World Cinema Dramatic Special Jury Award for Innovative Spirit at the Sandans Film Festival 2022 by Representatives Velasco de Venesia, Arroyo, Legarda, and other members.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2575 expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Mr. Miguel Faustman by Representatives Velasco de Venesia, Arroyo, Legarda, and other members.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2576 congratulating and commending the wire artist Mr. Raxo Ugarrap for his exhibition entitled "It Will Come Back to You," which was featured at the European Commission Lobby Show in Brussels, Belgium by Representatives Velasco de Venesia, Arroyo, Legarda, and other members.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2577 Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Dr. Suzie Moya Benitez. the passing of Dr. Suzi Moya Benitez by Representatives Velasco de Venesia, Arroyo, Legarda, and other members.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2578 Calling for continued whole-of-government, whole-of-nation support for marginalized Filipinos and pandemic-impacted sectors and industries towards the full economic and social recovery of the country by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Resolution 2579 Expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable David Belarmino Tyrol, former representative of the Second Legislative District of Bohol during the 8th Congress and member of the Batasam Pumbansa from 1984 to 1986 by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2580 Expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Marisol Tuts Conejos Panotes, representative of the Second Legislative District of Camarines Norte during the 17th and 18th Congresses by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2581 Expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Jesus Emmanuel Jess M. Paras, former representative of the First Legislative District of Bukidnon during the 15th Congress by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 26 Concurrent Resolution providing that the House of Representatives and the Senate hold a joint session, joint public session to canvas the votes cast for President and Vice President in the elections held on May 9, 2022 and proclaim the President-elect and Vice President-elect by Representatives Velasco, Romualdes, Martin, and Paduano.
The Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports. Report Numbers 1468 to 1470, 1473 to 1478 of the Committee on Justice on House Bill Numbers 10837 to 10839, 10842 to 10847. Report Numbers 1471 and 1472 of the Committees on Higher and Technical Education Appropriations and Ways and Means on House Bill Numbers 10840 and 10841.
Therefore mentioned reports are referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, move for a one-minute suspension.
Session suspended.
Oh no. I think it...
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt, consider, uh, House Concurrent Resolution Number 26. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to please read the title?
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill, House Resolution rather.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 26 Concurrent Resolution providing that the House of Representatives and the Senate hold a joint public session to canvas the votes cast for President and Vice President in the elections held on May 9, 2022 and proclaim the President-elect and Vice President-elect.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Concurrent Resolution 26.
Is there any objection? There's a motion to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 26. Is there any objection? Um, those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution, uh, House Concurrent Resolution Number 26 is now adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there an objection? The chair is down. The privilege hour is now open, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, to, um, deliver, um, his privileged speech, I move that we recognize the honorable gentleman from the Third District of Negros Oriental Deputy Speaker Arnulfo Tevez for his privileged speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
Um, Representative Arnulfo Tevez, Deputy Speaker of the Third District of Negros Oriental is now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, everybody. Congratulation sa la't ang nanalo nung nakaraang eleksyon. Unang-unah, this will be my longest privileged speech ever, at ito la 'yung speech ko na sinulat ko. Halos last ng speech ko, hindi ko sinusulat. Anyway, I was born in 1971. Nung nagkaroon ako ng malay at pag-iisip, lumaki kami na si President Ferdinand Marcos Senior ay masama sa aming piningin. Kahit si Senator Lawrence Tevez nalolo ko, ay kakapi niya, at ang kapatid niya na silolo minyong ay nasa kabila ang campo naman. There was a time, I remember, na umiyak kami dahil pinakulong ang aking ama for economic sabotage daw. Nung nangyari ang pagbaril kay Senator Ninoy Aquino, umiyak kami, at nung naghanap ang Edsa Revolución, nagtago kami sa Negros, kahit sa lasal alabang kami nag-aaral noon. After the Edsa Revolución, inagaw ng gobyerno ang mga productive farmlands except ang asyenda Luvisita. Dahil doon, nasira ang ating food production capacity ng bansa. During Marcos' time, because of the agri projects and dams, we were rice exporters. Ngayon, importer na. Ang laki ng tulong ng mga dam sa produksyon ng pagkain, at hanggang ngayon, ito ay gumagawa pa rin ng kuryente para sa atin. Wala akong maalala na malalaking dam na sumunod pa pagkatapos ng mga dam na nagawa ni President Marcos. I suggest we make many more dams. Ang dam project sa distri ko, ilang years na wala pa rin nangyari hanggang ngayon. Sana naman mapaglaanan ito ng pansin dahil again, ang dam ang laki ng tulong sa ekonomiya ng ating bansa para sa pagkain at para sa kuryente. As time went by and looking back after so many governments later, I realized that President Ferdinand Marcos Senior was one of the best, if not the best president we ever had. Plus, First Lady Imelda Marcos was very much loved by our poor brothers and sisters. I took the courage to say all this as I admit, as I admit that I was not with President Bongbong Marcos during the last election. I was with Senator Manny Pacquiao. This will not sound good coming from a party mate, but will resonate better from a guy from the other side of the fence. Sa tagalog, hindi kasi ito bagadang pakinggan kung ang nagsasabi nito ay kakampi. Kaya ako na ang nagsabi nito dahil hindi ako kakampi nung nakaraang eleksyon. Mas maganda siyang pakinggan kung ang nagsabi ay ang tao na galing sa kabila. Pero kahit pa anong sabihin natin, ang galing ni Ferdinand Marcos. I'd also like to take this opportunity to say sorry to President Bongbong Marcos for not supporting him last elections. Again, I was with Senator Manny Pacquiao, at pinaalam ko rin to kay incoming Speaker Martin Romaldes. Na bago pa ako mandidato si President BBM, na kay Senator Manny Pacquiao na ako. At bilang isang sabungero, meron kaming isang salita na pagpumusta ka na, wala ng bawiyan. Kahit pa, kahit pa ang taas na ng survey or rating ni President BBM, hindi ako lumipat ng partido. I've met President Bongbong Marcos once before through a friend named Edmund Abisamis, who was the National Liga President then, when I was still the Liga President in Negros Oriental. I found him to be okay, medyo down-to-earth and intelligent. Pero sorry, Mr. President, nakakumit na ako eh Senator Pacquiao, bago pa kayo naghain ng kandidatura. Bakit ko nasabi na napakagaling ni President Ferdinand Marcos Senior? Sa tulong din ni First Lady Imelda Marcos. Ang daming infrastructure projects sa panahon nila na hanggang ngayon ay napapakinabagan pa rin natin. What are those? Cultural Center of the Philippines, Lang Center of the Philippines, Philippine Heart Center, Philippine Children's Hospital. Hindi na ito nasundan at nadagdagan pa after Marcos' time. Baka marami pang mga proyekto na hindi ko naibanggit. Alam niyo ba na meron pang mga truck at construction equipment brought during Marcos' time and still in service until today? Baka pwede ipakita sa video 'yung orange na truck. 'Yung orange na truck. Wala. Pinasama ko sa video yun. Anyway, ito 'yung mga orange na truck na DH100 na dam trucks, at 'yung maliliit na kombination na piston at payloader combined. Steel, orange na equipment. Binili yun nung panahon ni Marcos, hanggang ngayon buhay pa. Ibig sabihin pulido. There were projects done on record time. Kung hindi ako nagkakamali, may isang golf course sa Late na ginawa ng ilang buwan lang. Late Park Hotel was constructed, I think, exacto isang taon lang ginawa. Anong ibig sabihin ito? Kung gusto, may paraan. Kung ayaw, maraming dahilan. Pwede naman pala matapos ng mabilis. Bakit ang dami natin projects na ang tagal matapos? Kung nagawa ni Ferdinand Marcos before, bakit hindi natin magawa ulit ngayon? A lot of Ferdinand and Imelda Marcos projects are timeless in design and well-planned, like where we are now. Itong building na to ay gawa pa sa panahon ni Ferdinand Marcos at ni Imelda. These halls of Congress, hanggang ngayon, hindi siya makaluma at naaayon pa rin sa ating panahon. Other notable infrastructure projects are the San Juanico Bridge, na sana pinadami at sinundan ng marami pang ganon to connect other islands. The Manila International Airport, now called Naiyawan, ang ganda rin ng paggawa, pagkagawa at pagkaplanon ito. I will even make a bill to rename this Ferdinand Marcos International Airport Terminal. Bakit? Sila naman talaga nagpagawa nito, at napakaganda. Pinalitan lang 'yung pangalan ito dahil pinagbindangan sila Marcos sa isang asasinasyon na hanggang ngayon wala namang lumabas na prueba. Ilang administrasyon na ang dumaan. Kung may matamaan, sorry, nagsasabi lang ako sa aking pakiramdam at sa totoo kong feelings. You've known me here in Congress for the last so many years. I've always been very frank and very honest, and I always speak my mind. Ang dami pang ibang proyekto, ang dami pang ibang proyekto, pero ang pinakamagandang ginawa ni President Ferdinand Marcos Senior na sinayang ng sumunod na gobyerno ay ang Bataan Nuclear Power Plant. If we continue to develop and run the Bataan Nuclear Power Plant, baka one-fourth lang ang presyo ng kuryente natin ngayon. Sayang dahilang sa politika nasira ang kinabukasan ng Pilipinas. Ang lakisana ng natulong sa ating mga kababayan ng murang kuryente. Sana ituloy pa rin ang Bataan Nuclear Power Plant kung hindi man magpagawa tayo ng bagong nuclear power plant. Magrequest din sana ako kay President BBM ng libreng gamot at healthcare services para sa lahat or sa, kahit sa mahirap na lang nating kababayan. Plus, sana bigyan natin ang pagkakataon, matuloy ang low-orbit satellites katulad nung kay Elon Musk na Starlink para may internet access na kung hindi man libre, mura para sa lahat ng Pilipino, kahit sa ang sulok ng ating bansa. Ngayon, ako ay nananawagan sa lahat na kahit ano pa ang partido natin nung nakaraang eleksyon, suportahan natin ang napili ng majority ng taong bayan. This is the first ever that we have a majority President and Vice President. When you say majority, ang bumoto sobra sa kalahati ng mga butante. So President Bongbong Marcos and Vice President Sara Duterte, ang sa alam ko, ang pinakaunang naging majority President ng ating bansa. Pero kung hindi natin sila tulungan, wala pa rin mangyayari kung hindi nakiisa ang taong bayan sa ating mga leaders. Unity ang unang hakbang para tayo ay umasenso, at sana ay tuluyan tayong babangon muli. Lastly, I would like to see President BBM to be at par or even better than his father, which I think kaya niya naman and is very likely. Lahat naman tayong mga magulang or parents want our children to be better than us. I'm sure... I'm sure President Ferdinand Marcos Senior will be happy in heaven to see his son do better than him. Congratulations, Mr. President. Looking forward to working with you in serving the Filipino people. Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, everybody.
Thank you, distinguished gentleman from Negros, the Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, there being none to interpolate. I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Congressman Arnie Tevez to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I request that we recognize the lady from the Second District of Palawan to avail of the privilege hour.
The distinguished lady from Palawan is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I proceed, Mr. Speaker?
Please proceed.
To the Honorable Speaker, our colleagues in the House of Representatives, ladies and gentlemen, pleasant afternoon to you all. Today, I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege. As a democratic country, our constitution guarantees to all Filipinos, not otherwise disqualified by law and possessing the necessary age and residency requirements, the right of suffrage, to exercise the supreme right to choose whom we want to be our leaders. As members of Congress, we are duty-bound to provide a system for securing the secrecy and sanctity of the ballot as well as a system for absentee voting by qualified Filipinos abroad. To this end, our Congress enacted several laws, including Republic Act Number 8436 in 1997, as amended by Republic Act Number 9369 in 2007, authorizing the use of an automated election system for our national and local elections. Expressly declared in these legislations is the policy of the state to ensure free, orderly, honest, peaceful, credible, and informed elections, plebiscits, referenda, recall, and other similar electoral exercises by improving on the election process and adopting systems which shall involve the use of an automated election system that will ensure the secrecy and sanctity of the ballot and all election, consolidation, and transmission documents in order that the process shall be transparent and credible and that the results shall be fast, accurate, and reflective of the genuine will of the people. These laws that aim for a rapid aggregation and analysis of results, in theory, potentially provide greater accuracy, remove unintentional voting error or intentional fraud, and inspire greater confidence in the electoral process. Yet despite the conduct of an automated election system since 1998, the system has been plagued by numerous accounts of issues and irregularities. I would like to raise before the Honorable Plenary issues arising from the recently concluded May 9, 2022, national and local elections. Foremost among the issues prevalent in the recently concluded electoral exercise are several accounts corroborating allegations of massive and unchecked vote buying, systematic and sustained disinformation campaigns, campaigns rather, to favor certain candidates, harassment, red tagging, and intimidation. The Commission on Elections has received over 400 reports. The Department received 73 complaints of vote buying, while the Pall Body's Task Force Contra Bigay also received 88 valid reports on its Facebook page and through email. The Department of Interior and Local Government has also recorded 245 vote-buying incidents with 28 suspects arrested. Going into this campaign and with our limited resources, we knew we were up against a Goliath. Early on, there had been reports of a massive and rampant system of distribution of IDs accompanied by ATM cards through which vote buying was expected to be perpetrated. Illegal armed groups were also reportedly being set up across several municipalities, primarily to implement a system of harassment and intimidation of leaders and voters. While our campaign at the local level centered on voter education, focusing on vaccinating the electorate against fear and influence arising from vote buying and other similar illegal acts during the elections, these acts continued unabated and the culture continues to persist. In addition to the issues I just mentioned, just as equally disturbing are reports of potential computer-assisted fraud maring these elections. In our province of Palawan, we encountered an unprecedented issue pertaining to the automated election system. Immediately after the Provincial Board of Canvassers convened on May 9, 2022, the day of the elections, the PBOC printed the initialization Report, which should show zero votes for each candidate, including the relevant geographic information. This initialization Report is the provincial or district canvas report pertaining to the different positions which the PBOC would be canvassing. Of all the printed initialization or canvas reports, there was a glaring irregularity for the position only of Member, House of Representatives, of the Second District of Palawan, for which I was a candidate. Instead of only one canvas report containing the names of all the six candidates for said position in alphabetical order, the Consolidated Canvassing System, or CCS, computer printed two canvas reports, splitting the names of the candidates for said position. One canvas report contained three names only, namely Abueg Beng, Cascolan Attorney Pen, and Mejorada Rico. Meanwhile, the other canvas report contained the names of the remaining three other candidates, namely Alvarez JCA, Delion Magnolia May, and Gastanes Edwin. Most notable in this situation was that these two canvas reports also indicated two different hash codes. All the other initialization Reports or Canvas Reports for other positions, including for the First and Third Congressional District, were comprised of only one canvas report, each with its own distinct hash code and containing the names of all the candidates in each canvas report. Now what is a hash code? And what is its significance? A hash code has been defined as a value, a combination of letters and numbers, generated by a function for an electronic document, data file, or program. It is a unique fingerprint for any program or digital file. One of the key purposes of a hash code is to determine if a piece of information is tampered or not. Thus, it ensures that no two different data will generate the same hash code. Such unique code should be reflected in election returns and in the transparency server. But if data is tampered with, it will generate an entirely different hash code. In the case of the automated elections, the unique code should be reflected in election returns and transparency servers because they should all have the same software. Now what does this all mean for us? First, it is a blatant irregularity because the two canvas reports necessarily created two different sets of candidates for the same position. Each position being canvassed must have only one canvas report with its own corresponding hash code. This irregularity is, to our knowledge, unprecedented. In fact, the Comelec's Resolution on Contingency Procedures for the May 2022 National and Local Elections does not even identify such a situation from ever arising. Second, because there are two hash codes for the same position, it is no longer clear if the votes for each of the candidates were correctly ascribed in their favor. It is distinctly probable that the votes of the electorate were not properly tabulated and counted for the position of Member, House of Representatives, Second District of Palawan. Given the two different hash codes for the same position, how can we be certain that the program or digital file used for the position of Member, House of Representatives, for the Second District was the same across all vote-counting machines, election returns, and the transparency server? The existence of these two different hash codes for the same position gives rise to the following questions. First, which of these hashes or hash codes will receive the votes when the votes are counted by the vote-counting machines? A vote for Abueg Beng, who appears as a first candidate in the ballot, may be interpreted by the machine to go to either Abueg Beng or Alvarez JCA, both of whom appear first in the two different canvas reports. A vote for Alvarez JCA, who appears second in the ballot, may then be interpreted to go to either Cascolan Attorney Pen or Delion Magnolia May, who both appear second in the two different canvas reports. And the same scenario may happen in the case of a vote for the third candidate, where the votes may go to either Mejorada Rico or Gastanes Edwin, both appearing third in the two different canvas reports. Second, which of these two hashes or hash codes will receive the votes when the votes are transmitted from the Polling Presents to the Municipal Board of Canvassers and eventually the Provincial Board of Canvassers? The possibility also exists that only one of the hash codes was used, while the other was not. Either scenario would result in the inaccurate and falsified counting of votes for this position and thus a negation of the people's choice. Whatever the scenario that might have transpired, the bottom line is that there was an irregularity. And faced with such an irregularity even before the closing of Polling Presents on May 9, 2022, and despite continuing motions filed by our lawyers to suspend the transmission and canvassing proceedings for the position of Congressman for the Second District only until the irregularity was explained and resolved, the PBOC disregarded the glaring anomaly in spite of the board's admitted ignorance on how such a situation could arise and should be resolved. The PBOC nevertheless proceeded with the transmission and canvassing of votes. We filed a petition for failure of elections before the Comelec unbank, notifying the PBOC therefore. We likewise filed the pre-proclamation contest before the PBOC, which it denied in an order, in which order we appealed before the Comelec. Notwithstanding prior notice of these proceedings, the PBOC continued with the proclamation of candidates with allegedly the highest number of votes, stating that there is no temporary restraining order or legal impediment to the proclamation. To this day, the Comelec has failed to provide an adequate explanation why there were two different canvas reports for the same position despite a report made by the PBOC itself on the issue immediately after it was discovered. Instead, when the PBOC proceeded with the proclamation, it presented a new canvas report, which now consolidated all the names of the six candidates and with a hash code different from those of the two previous canvas reports. And I wonder if the Comelec has any plans at all of addressing or explaining this irregularity. Aside from the particular irregularity I just discussed, all over the country there have been numerous reports of vote-counting machine failures, canvassed votes being more than the total number of registered voters in Polling Presents, printed receipts showing votes for candidates different from those who are actually voted for, harassment of both poll watchers and voters, pre-shaded ballots, and teachers and/or watchers shading ballots themselves, among others. With all these issues surrounding the May 22 National and Local Elections, election results in many areas have become tainted with doubt and suspicion. How can we be certain if those who were proclaimed as winners reflect the genuine will of the electorate? Those whom they actually voted for? If we cannot adhere to free, orderly, honest, peaceful, credible, and informed elections, we lose the essence of our democracy. We Filipinos would no longer have the freedom to choose our leaders and exercise our right to vote without constraints. We would be disenfranchised. Elections would be a mockery, an exercise in futility if the electorate cannot express their own will, of their own accord, and without restraints. While the modernization and automation of elections has been seen as a step forward in ensuring election results that are fast, accurate, and correct, the appropriate safeguards to protect the sanctity of the ballot and truly show the choice of the electorate are less than ideal. In many instances, the automated election system has been seen to be the very instrument used in propagating anomalies. Since the computer codes used to communicate with the computer systems cannot be easily tracked, there's often doubt on whether the election results are truly reflective of the genuine will of the electorate. It is burdensome to countercheck irregularities, more so to get evidence thereof. The poll watchers, including the PPC RV watchers, are only given printed election returns, which serve as the basis for counterchecking the canvas reports. But the doubt often centers on allegations of irregularities in SD cards, the vote-counting machines themselves, the hash code, et cetera. Given these technical hindrances and difficulties in detecting anomalies, the Comelec should proceed with caution when faced with cases of blatant irregularities and not rush towards an immediate proclamation of questionable leading candidates. In so doing, the entire electoral process is put under suspicion, leaving a constant shadow of doubt on the legitimacy of the proclamation and corresponding distrust and skepticism of proclaimed leaders. When these doubts are sold, Filipinos will lose faith not only in the country's electoral process, but in the whole system of government. As the House of the People, this is our ultimate challenge in the 18th Congress. We must investigate, clear up all these allegations of massive vote buying and computer fraud, and regain the faith of the Filipino people. But as our time in this august body is coming to an end, I urge our succeeding lawmakers, the representatives of the 19th Congress, to initiate measures to strengthen the Philippines' automated election system. We took a step in the right direction by transitioning from manual elections to automated elections. However, we must fortify our existing electoral procedures and measures enabling the whole electoral process to be more credible and transparent, one that inspires greater confidence and is truly representative of the Filipino people's wishes. To all the leaders elected by the Filipino people, our colleagues in the House, congratulations to all of you. May you truly bring the Philippines to greater success and prosperity. Mabuhay po kayo at maraming salamat. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, distinguished lady from Second District of Palawan, the Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Lady from the Second District of Palawan to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to avail of the privilege hour, we have Congresswoman Kulyamat online. I move that we recognize the Congresswoman representing Bayan Munapartlis for her privileged speech. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
The distinguished representative of Bayan The distinguished representative of Bayan Munap is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Ako po ay nagsasalita ngayon hanggang sa pagtagal ng open pit mining bans sa South Cota Bato. Ginong speaker, mga tapwa akong pinatawan sa lahat ng nakarinig ngayong hapon. Mapanghamong araw sa ating lahat. Magdono-edo, magandang araw sa ating lahat. Narito ako ngayon sa harap ngayong lahat, isang katutubong lumad mula sa Mindanao upang magsayta tungkol sa kolektibong hinaharap ng mga katutubo at mamamayang Pilipino sa gitna ng banta ng open pit mining sa bansa. Ang lupa ay buhay para sa amin na mga katutubo. Malamang ay makailang ulit ninyo ng narinig ito. Dahil ito ang katotohanan para sa amin na mga katutubo sa buong bansa na nakaugat ang lupang ninuno, nakaugat sa lupang ninuno ang aming buhay at kabuhayan. Kaya labis ang puot at pagkadismaya sa balita noong May 16 tatapos lang ng eleksyon na napagdesisyonan ng lokal na pamahalaan ng South Cota Bato ang tanggalin ang open pit mining bans sa probinsya. Ginong speaker, sa South Cota Bato matagpuan ang tampakan mining project. Tinatayang isa sa pinakamalaking copper gold mine field sa buong Southeast Asia. Ayon sa tansya ng mga experto, mayroong 375 atunilada na copper at 360 ons ng ginto ang makukuha mula dito sa pamamagitan ng open pit mining. Ngunit kapalit ng yaman na ito ang dusa ng libulibong katutubo at mamamayang Pilipino. Tinatayang 4, 4,000 katutubong blaan ang mapapalaya sa lupang ninuno habang mahigit 3,000 ektya ang kabubatan at lupa ang papatagin. Malawak ang pagpapalayas sa pagwasak ng mga buhay at kabuhayan ang aabutin ng mga katutubo sa South Cota Bato. Ginong speaker, sa loob ng 12 taon ang open pit mining bans sa South Cota Bato na itinabuyod ng mga katutubo mamamayan at lokal na ofisyal sa South Cota Bato ang nagsisilbing dipinsa laban sa pagsisimula ng tampakan mine project. Buhay at kamatayan ang pakikibaka ng katutubo laban sa tampakan project. Sino ang nakakatalimot sa madugong tampakan masaker sa South Cota Bato na humitil sa buhay ni Nadyo B. Campion at ang kanyang dalawang anak? Isang kababaihang leader lumad. Actibo si Doby Campion sa kampanya laban sa pagpasok ng extrata Sagittarius Mine Incorporated, operator ng tampakan mine project. Siya ay pinatay sa isang raid ng mga elemento ng 27th Infantry Battalion noong taon 2012. Hanggang ngayon ay wala pa ring hustisya para sa kanila. Mr. Speaker, bago pa man ang desisyon ng probinsya ng South Cota Bato ilalim, alam nating matagal ng nais ibinta ng kasalukuyang administrasyon ang mga yamang mineral at recourse sa mga lupang ninuno. Matatandaan noong December 2021, tinanggal ng DNR ang nationwide ban ng open pit mining na ipinapatupad noong 2017. Ito ay matapos na desisyon si Pangulong Duterte mismong noong April 2021 na tanggalin ang moratorium sa mga bagong mga kontrata ng mina. Matagal na ring sinusulong ng Sagittarius Mine Incorporated, ang operator ng tampakan project na tanggalin ang open pit mining ban. Ayon sa kanila, ang open pit mining lang ang pinakamainam na paraan upang makuha ang mineralis sa tampakan. Malinaw na sa matagal ng inilatag ang daan ang daan para sa pagpasok ng mga dayuhang mina sa mga lupang ninuno. Ginong speaker, marain kinukun din na ng mga katutubo sa buong bansa ang open pit mining dahil tuluyan itong wawasakin ang ating kapaligiran na inaasahan kumukup sa atin sa panahon ng sakuna. Isang pambabalahura sa karapatan ng mga katutubong blaan, mga frontline environmental defenders na siyang apektado ang kabuhayan sa open pit mining na ito. At hindi nating tinututulan ang open pit mining bilang paraan ng pagminina. Ngunit hanggang hangga't nanatili ang export-oriented na pagminina sa bansa at iilan lamang ang makikinabang hindi tutugon ang pagminina sa pagpapaunlad sa ating mga komunidad at pagtataguyod sa pambansang industrialisasyon. Mr. Speaker, walang masama sa ating panindigan na alagaan ang ating likasyaman. Dipinsahan ang lupang ninuno laban sa mga dayuhang pagminina na sumisira sa kalikasan at relasyon ng buong mamamayan. Kaya naniniwala kami sa lokal, nanawagan kami sa lokal na pumunuan ng South Cota Bato na irekonsedera ang pagtanggal ng open pit mining ban. Nanawagan tayo sa mga bagong halal na at pinatawan at leader na tumindig kasama ang mamamayang Pilipino. Basura ang mga makadayuhang mining act of 1995 at isulong ang progressibong patataran sa pagminina. Higit sa lahat, nanawagan ako sa mga mamamayan sa South Cota Bato at ng buong bansa, mga lumad at mga magsasaka, mga taong simbahan, mga makakalikasan at lahat ng progressibo na magkaissa at buong kapang natutulan ang pagtanggal ng open pit mining ban at anumang patatarat, patana ng dayuhang pandarambong sa lupang ninuno at likasyaman ng bansa. Malaki ang tiwala ko na hindi nagmisa ang mga katutubo sa labang ito. Ngayon, matapos na ang ikalaking walo na Kongreso. Tila napakaraming ganap at nabago, ngunit nananatili pa rin ang mga pundangintal na problema sa ating lipunan. Kaya hindi nagtatapos dito ang ating pakikibaka para sa karapatan ninuno at pagkamit ang patas ninuno at pagkamit ang patas at makatarong ang lipunan para sa lahat. Nasa labas ng Kongreso ang tunay na laban kasama ang malawak na mamamayan para sa lupa at buk kabuhayan ng mga katutubo ngayon at sa susunod na henerasyon. Sa loob o labas man ang Kongreso, tuloy ang laban para sa lupang ninuno at sariling pagpapasya ng mga katutubo. Ginong speaker, maraming salamat at idolamang po ang ating dubulid speech.
Maraming salamat din po sa ating representante ng Bayan Munap, the Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of the Congresswoman representing Bayan Munap to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed to the agenda for today. Agenda number eight, ratification of bicameral reports.
Proceed. Let us proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of the bicameral conference committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 10308 and Senate Bill Number 2485 on creating a second congressional commission on education. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the set bicameral conference committee report. So moved.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are in receipt of bicameral conference committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 6134 and Senate Bill Number 2494 on strengthening the financing system for agriculture, fisheries, and rural development in the Philippines. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the set bicameral conference committee report.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, third, for the bicameral ratification report, we are in receipt of the bicameral conference committee report on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 10703 and Senate Bill Number 2209 on penalizing online sexual abuse and exploitation of children. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the set bicameral conference committee report. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is hereby approved. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed with the business of today. And these are the approval of bills on third reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third and final reading House Bill under the National High School Elementary School School Division Office and Sports Academy of the following House Bill: 10709, 10710, 10711, 10716, 10724, 10720. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call for the nominal voting.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none, the Secretary General, please proceed with your roll call.
House Bill Number 10709, Anak Converting the Hibauan Elementary School in Barangay Hibauan Sur, Manduriyo District, Iloilo City into an integrated school to be known as Hibauan Integrated School and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 10710, Anak Separating the Vitale National High School Sinorapan Annex in Barangay Licomosang Sangwangga City from the Vitale National High School converting it into an independent national high school to be known as Sinorapan National High School and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 10711, Anak Establishing a National High School in Barangay Magka, Municipality of Sagney, Province of Camarinesur to be known as Magka National High School and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 10716, Anak Establishing in the Municipality of San Miguel, Province of Sangwangga del Sur, a separate schools division office for the Second District of Sangwangga del Sur to be known as the Sangwangga del Sur Schools Division Office 2 and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 10724, Anak Converting the Nabitasan Elementary School in Barangay Nabitasan, Lapas District, Iloilo City into an integrated school to be known as the Nabitasan Integrated School and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 10720, Anak Establishing a Sports Academy in the Municipality of Dimasalam, Province of Masbate to be known as Masbate Sports Academy and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 10709, 10710, 10711, 10716, 10724, and 10720. Abante Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg Saldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarow, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Omentado, Babasa, Bagatzing, Balindoong, Banias Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskub, Bautista Bandigan, Bautista Ling, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Beazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Cabotchan, Cabredo, Tagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredenil, Kaytano Alan, Kaytano LaArni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Cuaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Dagooc, Dalipe, Dalob, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos Alfred, De Los Santos Edward, De Loso Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalig, Duavit, Duhali, DoTerte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Epcas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinas Ria, Farinas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Halos Hoss, Javier Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Conghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Lim Kay Chong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudatu, Marco Leta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco, Nunez Malaniaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Penya, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirez Sata, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salseda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvador Tambunting, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulu, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singzon, Singzon Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharian, Tan Shurney, Tehada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Bilianueva Eduardo, Bilianueva Noel, Villar, Villerasa Suarez, Villiarika, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 10709, 10710, 10711, 10716, 10724, and 10720. Honorable Representatives, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abunda, Agarow, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Alvarez Pantalyon, Aragones, Omentado, Bernos, Bilyones- Alvarez Pantalyon, Aragones, Aumentado, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bordado, Bravo, Bulut, Bustos, Kanama, Cardema, Castelo, Chungalaw, Coelizaldi, Coliantes, Kuwa, De Jesus, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos Edward, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Ermita Buahin, Espino, Farinas Ria, Farinas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Garbin, Enrique, Gar, Garcia Vincent, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gonzalez Sandro, Guya, Halosjos, Kung Hun, Lagman, Lia Chon, Mangudatatu, Marquez, Matba, Nava, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco, Olivares, Ordanes, Pakya Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Saulog, Singzon, Sin Suwat, Suarez Aleta, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Shariyan, Tan Shurni, Tiyanko, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ui Juliet, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villanueva Eduardo, Villarasa Suarez,
With two hundred fourteen members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill numbers 10709, 10710, 10711, 10716, 10724, and 10720 are all approved on third and final reading. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third and final reading under the state colleges and universities, House Bill number 10712. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call for the nominal voting. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby tasked to proceed with the roll call voting. Please proceed.
House Bill 10712, an act designating the Central Luzon State University in the Science City of Munoz, Province of Nueva Ecija, as the research and development regional zone of Central Luzon and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Republic Act number 4067 entitled "An Act to Convert the Central Luzon Agricultural College into the Central Luzon State University and Authorizing the Appropriation of Additional Funds Therefore." Roll call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number 10712. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Matong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista Bandigan, Bautista Lim, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredenil, Kayetano Alan, Kayetano La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos Alfred, De Los Santos Edward, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebkas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinas Ria, Farinas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepthali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Halosjos, Javier, Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Lim Kay Chong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudatatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco, Nunez Malaniaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirez Satos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvador Tambunting, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulog, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singzon, Singzon Mihan, Sin Suwat, Swansing Astrilita, Swansing Horashos, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Toledo, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill number 10712. Abaya, Abelianosa, Abunda, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Alvarez Pantalyon, Aragones, Aumentado, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bordado, Bravo, Bulut, Bustos, Kanama, Cardema, Castelo, Chungalaw, Coelizaldi, Coliantes, Kuwa, De Jesus, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos Edward, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Espino, Farinas Ria, Farinas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Garbin, Garcia Vincent, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gonzalez Sandro, Guya, Halosjos, Kung Hun, Lagman, Lia Chon, Mangudatatu, Marquez, Matba, Nava, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco, Olivares, Ordanes, Pakya Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Saulog, Singzon, Sin Suwat, Suarez Aleta, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Shariyan, Tan Shurni, Tiyanko, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ui Juliet, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villanueva Eduardo, Villarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Yap Victor, Zubiri.
With two hundred fourteen members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number 10712 is hereby approved on third and final reading. The majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third and final reading under the land disposition utilization of the following House Bill, 10713, 10714, 10726, 10727, 10728. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call for the nominal voting. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to proceed with the roll call voting.
House Bill 10713.
Madam Speaker, I move that we amend the motion to exclude the House Bill 10726, 10727, 10728. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measures and hereby call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 10713, an act declaring a parcel of land located in the Municipality of Pawai in the Province of Ilocos Norte, a protected area with a category of protected landscape under the National Integrated Protected Area System to be referred to as the Pawai Lake Protected Landscape, providing for its management and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 10714, an act declaring a parcel of land located in the city of Gapan and Municipality of General Tinio in the Province of Nueva Ecija, a protected area with a category of protected landscape under the National Integrated Protected Area System to be referred to as the Minalungao Protected Landscape, providing for its management and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill numbers 10713 and 10714. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista Bandigan, Bautista Lim, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredenil, Kayetano Alan, Kayetano La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos Alfred, De Los Santos Edward, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebkas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinas Ria, Farinas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepthali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Halosjos, Javier, Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Lim Kay Chong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudatatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco, Nunez Malaniaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirez Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Martin, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvador Tambunting, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulog, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singzon, Singzon Mihan, Sin Suwat, Swansing Astrilita, Swansing Horashos, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for consideration and third reading of House Bill number 10713 and House Bill number 10714. Abaya, Abelianosa, Abunda, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Alvarez Pantalyon, Aragones, Aumentado, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bordado, Bravo, Bulut, Bustos, Kanama, Cardema, Castelo, Chungalaw, Coelizaldi, Coliantes, Kuwa, De Jesus, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos Edward, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Espino, Farinas Ria, Farinas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Garcia Vincent, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gonzalez Sandro, Guya, Halosjos, Kung Hun, Lagman, Lia Chon, Mangudatatu, Marquez, Matba, Nava, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco, Olivares, Ordanes, Pakya Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Saulog, Singzon, Sin Suwat, Suarez Aleta, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Shariyan, Tan Shurni, Tiyanko, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Ui Juliet, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villanueva Eduardo, Villarasa Suarez,
With two hundred fifteen members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill numbers 10713 and 10714 are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the, for consideration for third and final reading under the conversion into national roads of the following House Bill, 10726, 10727, 10728. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call for the nominal voting. I so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measures and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number 10726, an act converting the Kamalig Bypass Road in the Municipality of Kamalig, Province of Albay, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 10727, an act converting the road stretching from the Komun Inarado Junction to the barangays of Komun, Kotmon, and Del Rosario in the Municipality of Kamalig and the barangays of Alobo, Burgos, and Baskaran in the Municipality of Daraga, all in the Province of Albay, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 10728, an act converting the road stretching from the Komun Inarado Junction to the barangays of Tagaitai, Bariu, Palanob, and Mauraro in the Municipality of Kamalig, Province of Albay, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers 10726, 10727, and 10728. Honorable representatives, Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista Bandigan, Bautista Lim, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredenil, Kayetano Alan, Kayetano La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalaw, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos Alfred, De Los Santos Edward, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebkas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinas Ria, Farinas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Mark, Go Mark, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepthali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Halosjos, Javier, Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Lim Kay Chong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudatatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco, Nunez Malaniaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Peña, Uwano Dizon, Pakia Alberto, Pakia Rogelio, Padiernos, Padua, No, Palma, Pancho, Pena, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Martin, Romaldes Yeda, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalans, Sagarberias, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvador Tambunting, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rectos, Armentos, Saulog, Savaliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Sing Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horashos, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sunthay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talliado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Tevez Arnofo, Tevez Jose, Tianko, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umani Alfonso, Umani Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiarazza Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call of members for consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers 10726, 10727, 10728. Abaya, Abelianosa, Abunda, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Alvarez Pantalyon, Aragones, Aumentado, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bordado, Bravo, Bulut, Bustos, Bustos, Canama, Cardema, Castelo, Chungalao, Coelizaldi, Coliantes, Kuwa, De Jesus, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos Edward, Dimaporo Abdullah, Duavit, Espino, Farinas Ria, Farinas Rudis, Fernandez, Fernando, Garcia Vincent, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gonzalez Sandro, Guya, Halus, Jos, Konghun, Lagman, Lechon, Mangudatou, Marquez, Matba, Navan, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Fidel, Nolasco, Olivares, Ordanes, Pakia Alberto, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Rivera, Roman, Romero, Romero, Saulog, Singson, Sing Suat, Suarez Aleta, Si Alvarado, Tan Samir, Tan Sharri An, Tan Shurni, Tianko, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Uy Juliet, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villanueva Eduardo, Villiarazza Suarez, Villiarica, Yap Victor, Zubiri.
With 215 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill numbers 10726, 10727, and 10728 are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we direct the Secretary General to immediately transmit to the Senate the bills that we have approved on third reading this afternoon. I so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is so directed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that for the consideration and approval on second reading, House as containing Committee Report 1459, House Bill 10814, submitted by the Committee on Foreign Affairs. And for this purpose, may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill? I so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10814, an act establishing the archipelagic sea lanes in the Philippine archipelagic waters, prescribing the rights and obligations of foreign ships and aircraft exercising the right of archipelagic sea lanes passage.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fourth District of Batangas to sponsor the bill.
Honorable Bolilia is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10814 be considered as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection?
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt the explanatory note.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10814. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number 10814. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill number 10814 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for that we consider House Bill 10837 submitted by the under Committee Report 1468, submitted by the Committee on Justice. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill? I so move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10837, an act granting Philippine citizenship to Yongtang.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fourth District of Batangas to sponsor the measure.
Honorable Bolilia is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10837 be considered as the sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10837. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number 10837. Is there any objection? Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill number 10837 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10838, under Committee Report 1469, submitted by the Committee on Justice. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill? I so move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10838, an act granting Philippine citizenship to King Tong Yu.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the sponsorship Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Leanda Bolilia of Fourth District of Batangas.
Honorable Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the said bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill numbers 10838 be considered as the sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10838. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number 10838. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill number 10838 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Bill 10839, under Committee Report 1470, submitted by the Committee on Justice. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill?
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10839, an act granting Philippine citizenship to Botao Chen.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fourth District of Batangas to sponsor the bill. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Bolilia is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10839 be considered as the sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill 10838. I withdraw my motion. Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other members wishes to introduce individual amendments nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10839. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number 10839. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill number 10839 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10842, under Committee Report 1473, submitted by the Committee on Justice. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill?
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10842, an act granting Philippine citizenship to David Loren Cisson.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fourth District of Batangas to sponsor the measure. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10842 be considered as a sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move for vote on second reading, House Bill 10842. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number 10842. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill number 10842 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for we consider House Bill 10843, submitted by the Committee Report, under Committee Report 1474, submitted by the Committee on Justice. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10843, an act granting Philippine citizenship to Gian Goh Hu.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fourth District of Batangas to sponsor the measure. I move, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the said bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10840 be considered as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10843. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number 10843. Those who are in favor, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill number 10843 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10844, submitted by the under Committee Report number 1475, submitted by the Committee on Justice. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10844, an act granting Philippine citizenship to Kaipeng Liu.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fourth District of Batangas to sponsor the bills.
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the said bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10844 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, again, there nor being other member wishes to introduce individual amendment nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10844. I so move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill number 10844. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill number 10844 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10845, under Committee Report 1476, submitted by the Committee on Justice. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill? I so move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10845, an act granting Philippine citizenship to Kyle Douglas Campbell Jennerman.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fourth District of Batangas to sponsor the measure. I so move, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the said bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10845 be adopted as a sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10845. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to approve House Bill number 10845. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number 10845 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10846, under Committee Report 1477 submitted by the Committee on Justice. For this purpose, Madam Speaker, I move that the Secretary General to read the title of the bill?
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10846, An Act Granting Philippine Citizenship to Yuan Sheng Duan.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fort District of Batangas to sponsor the measure. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the said bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10846 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of amendments. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other members wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I saw, I move that we close the period of sponsor amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move for second reading, House Bill 10846. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to approve House Bill number 10846. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number 10846 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10847, under Committee Report 1478 submitted by the Committee on Justice. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill? I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10847, An Act Granting Philippine Citizenship to Kuo Wei Su.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fort District of Batangas to sponsor the measure.
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the said bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10847 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I'm so move, I move that we close the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move for vote on second reading, House Bill 10847. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to approve House Bill number 10847. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number 10847 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under Metro Manila Development Committee, I move that we consider House Bill 10811, under Committee Report 1457 submitted by the Committee on Metro Manila Development. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10811, An Act Mandating No Physical Contact in Apprehending Traffic Violators, Mandating the Use of the Appropriate Technology Relative thereto and Providing Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fort District of Batangas to sponsor the bill?
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the said measure.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10811 be adopted as the sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other members wishes to introduce individual amendments nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10811. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to approve House Bill number 10811. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number 10811 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10824, under Committee Report 1461 submitted by the Committee on Natural Resources. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill?
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10824, An Act Declaring the Month of June of Every Year as the Marine Turtle Conservation and Protection Month.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fort District of Batangas to sponsor the bill? I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the said bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10824 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10824. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to approve House Bill number 10824. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number 10824 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10834, under Committee Report 1466 submitted by the Committee on Natural Resources. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill? I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
An Act Institute, House Bill number 10834, An Act Institutionalizing the Tamarao Conservation Program, Creating an Administrative and Implementation Mechanism and Providing Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the sponsorship and debate.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia to sponsor the bill? I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10834 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10834. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to approve House Bill number 10834. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number 10834 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10802, under Committee Report 1456 submitted by the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs. And for this purpose, I may request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill? I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10802, An Act Expanding the Coverage of Compulsory Insurance of Overseas Filipino Workers, Further Amending Republic Act Number 8042, Otherwise Known as the Migrant Workers and Overseas Filipinos Act of 1995 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia to sponsor the bill? I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the bill.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10802 be considered as the sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that there being no other member wishes to introduce committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move for vote for second reading, House Bill 10802.
There's a motion to approve House Bill number 10802. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number 10802 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 10799, under Committee Report 1453 submitted by the Committee on People's Participation. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Bill 10799, An Act Institutionalizing Industry-Cluster-Based Programs and Projects Through Inter-local Cooperation and People's Participation.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia of Fort District of Batangas to sponsor the bill?
Honorable Leanda Bolilia is recognized to sponsor the said measure.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10799 be adopted as the sponsorship speech.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member wishes to interpolate the sponsor, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
For any objection, the Chair hears none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 10799. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to approve House Bill number 10799. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill number 10799 is hereby approved on second reading.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Resolution 2368, under Committee Report 1465. And may I direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution?
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said resolution.
House Resolution 2368, Resolution Commending the Del Monte Philippines Incorporated Employees and Community Credit Cooperative for its Outstanding Contribution to Cooperative Development and Exemplary Commitment for Economic Growth and Sustainable Progress.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 2368. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to approve House Resolution Number 2368. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Resolution Number 2368 is hereby adopted.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Resolution 2463, under Committee Report 1467 submitted by the Committee on Cooperative Development. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution?
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said resolution.
House Resolution 2463, Resolution Commending the Gubat Saint Anthony Cooperative for their exemplary contribution to community building and cooperative development.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 2463. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to approve House Resolution Number 2463. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Resolution Number 2463 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2435. And may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House Resolution?
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said resolution.
Resolution Commending Kagai Anon Antonio Julian Simon Telvan for his courageous and heroic acts during World War III.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2435. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to adopt House Resolution 2435. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Resolution Number 2435 is hereby adopted.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2550, under Committee Report 1463 submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sport Development. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House Resolution? I saw move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said resolution.
House Resolution 2550, Resolution Congratulating Filipino resolution congratulating Filipino artistic gymnast Carlos Edriel Yulo and commending him for the extraordinary feat of winning both the gold medal in the men's vault event and silver medal in the men's parallel bars competition at the 2021 World Artistic Gymnastics Championships held in Kitakushu, Japan.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2550. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to adopt House Resolution 2550. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Resolution Number 2550 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2551, under Committee Report 1464, submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sport Development. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Resolution. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said resolution.
House Resolution 2551, resolution congratulating the racers of the Filipinas Obstacle Sports Federation and commending them for winning the first world's highest obstacle course race held on Mount Kilimanjaro, Tanzania.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2551. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to adopt House Resolution 2551. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Resolution Number 2551 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that I move that we consider House Resolution 2488, under Committee Report 1454, submitted by the Committee on Senior Citizens. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of House Resolution. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said resolution.
House Resolution 2488, resolution urging the Department of Trade and Industry, the Department of Social Welfare and Development, the Department of Information and Communications Technology, the National Commission of Senior Citizens, the National Council on Disability Affairs, and other relevant government agencies to immediately adopt and effectively implement the guidelines on the application of the discounts granted to senior citizens and persons with disabilities for all online transactions pursuant to law.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution 2488. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to adopt House Resolution 2488. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Resolution Number 2488 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the omnibus approval on second reading of the following local bills. House Bill 10800, as a Committee Report 1455. House Bill 10729, under Committee Report 1452. House Bill 10840, under Committee Report 1471. House Bill 10841, under Committee Report 1472. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the following bills. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measures.
House Bill 10800, an act increasing the bed capacity of the Tomas Lachica District Hospital in the municipality of Jose Abad Santos, province of Davao Occidental, from 25 to 50 beds and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 10729, an act establishing the Cordillera Autonomous Region. House Bill 10840, an act establishing the Southern Luzon State University Katanaan Campus College of Veterinary Medicine in the municipality of Katanaan, province of Quezon, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 10841, an act establishing the Beol University College of Veterinary Medicine in the city of Ligao, province of Albay, and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider the respective explanatory notes as the sponsorship of the said measures. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate on the said local bills, I move that we terminate the period of interpolations. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments and approve the committee amendments, if any, as contained in the respective committee reports of the aforementioned bills. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading of the following House Bills, 10800, 10729, 10840, 10841. I saw move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion for the omnibus approval of the aforementioned bills. Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill Number 10800, 10729, 10840, and 10841 are hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move the one-minute suspension.
Session suspended.
Pero diyan sir, para libiyo.
Ako na, ay.
Dina basa din na, yun concurrent resolution. Armada't kang nating.
Babasahin pa, di siya.
Pero kung nakuha.
Renirekta mo na.
Yung basa ka na di ba?
Hindi pa, announcement lang yun, arum 2 lang yun, arum 2 lang yun.
Sa'yo 'yung arum 2?
Napost na.
Saman na to. 2582.
Asan may arum 2 ka na?
2582.
Oo, madami yun.
May ano, i-post. Pagkatapos. Ano pagbasahin?
Hindi pa to, hindi pa to, arum 3 na to. Pero yun ano lang. Dipit na raw, pag pinasahan dipit na, re-direccy na. Tano, ang gandito lang. Vorne commit report. Concurrent resolution express in profound condolences to the members. Pagpa, ano ka pa, paprint ka pa ng isa?
Paprint ka pa ng dalawa? Paprint ba na?
Paprint ka isa parang mapabasaan sa taas, dalawa. Ito? Isa kopya lang to? Gusto mong babasahin, yun picturan yun na lang to.
Picturan yun na, picturan yun na babasahin.
Diket sir to. Picturan yun na lang babasahin. Pero, basin, kunta na to ah. Po motor muna, po motor, po motor lang dika sir. Diket. Dila ako sa taas, ako na magaano kayo. Akong arum 2.
Siya ma na piga.
Hindi, ito na lang ba niya? Isa lang ba niya?
Bilu ganun?
Itong maxis.
Mapicture, picturan mo na.
Pero pagbasa sir, si Mam do.
Ito na lang yung ano, picturan. Picture then, yung iyong babasahin.
Oo. Ang ganda.
Tapos ang babasahin naman, si si Adam, sun 2587.
Hindi, meron ba sila kopya? Meron nga ng yellow, ano, matroni ba?
Tapos meron tayong consolidation ba, papamushan ba?
Alam mo ba?
Arum, asan arum 2? Hindi, hindi pa di ba sir? Ano, meron sa taas, meron ka.
Ito sir, yung, yung, ay. Yung sa taas na nung ano ba arum 2?
Ale.
Sa taas.
Epi arum 2.
Epi Mam, epi five.
Ito yung, ito, ito.
Ito, 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 ito yung.
Ito.
Yung babasahin mo.
Ito tayo, tsaka to. Ivy, ito, tapos ito.
Ah, pa, pa. Meron ka picture na ano?
Let's go. Are we good? Okay na tayo? Okay?
Pareho may title ah, additional reference pareho.
Oo, pero muna, ako yung moment.
Oo.
Tapos, yung resolutions na lang.
Uka na yun na lang ba?
Nung, sa ID.
Di ba to galing?
Meron to do isa.
Isa pa.
Sir Hoben?
Sir Hoben? Sir Hoben?
Meron pa diba sa, sabi ni Arsel? Tapos ko to ang tukwa, meron pa daw isne. May friend, pasti Eslo na isa pang resolution na isa. Yan, sa'ko to, karami naman yun siya. Yung lang, kahit yun, kahit yun. Oo. Oo, oo, padala mo nga 'yung picture, padala mo. Oo, para maibasahin dito. So yun lang, yung mga resolutions. Pwede nga, picturan mo lang, sa pag-arum. Yan, tsaka dun, di na.
Pinabasa, napatindi sa.
Arum 3, padala mo lang 'yung picture para maisama namis. So to express, of the House, of the House and the family of. Uh, ready, Agus, Susan Rosas.
Very good, pinahabol po yung general.
Oh.
Tapos commit rules.
I don't know. Kasama sa arum 3. Baka 2588 yan. Baka 2588. 2587 na last. Rosas, Susan Rosas. Skila ano, Eslo. Pwede nga. After 2587, 2592. 2592. Expressing the profound condolences of the House and the demise of former representative, President Gino Xarco. Urias. Sino nag, ano ba't, ito ba yung K Eslo? Oo, wala kasi.
Padala mo siya yun, pwede na?
Eka.
Yung title lang nito. Tutuloy-tuloy ito pasali. 2585, 2587, 259. Ito arum. Tamaga, arum 22, FL.
Ayas? Okay?
Posted lang, posted lang yung 2.
Yung, kuli ba, post na? May copy na ba sila?
Okay na, pwede ka?
Three days and a half.
Additional reference muna, tapos yung arum.
Session issue.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communication and messages. I summon Madam Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure. Additional reference of business, messages from the Senate. Message dated May 23, 2022, informing the House that the Senate uneven date passed Senate bill numbers 2423, 2455, 2484, 2399, 2490, and 2450, in which it requests the concurrence of the House. To the Committee on Rules. Message dated May 23, 2022, informing the House that uneven date the Senate adopted Senate concurrent resolution number 18 and titled. Concurrent resolution, providing that the Senate and the House of Representatives hold a joint public session to canvass the votes cast for President and Vice President in the elections held on May 9, 2022, and proclaim the President-elect and Vice President-elect, in which it requests the concurrence of the House of Representatives. To the Committee on Rules. Additional reference of business, resolutions. House Resolution 2582, congratulating Brother Armin Loustro for being elected as the 28th Superior General of the Brothers of the Christian Schools by Representative Salvador Tambunting. To the Committee on Rules. House Resolution 2583, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Jesusa Purificacion Levy, Susan Rosas Sonora Po, by Representative Salvador Tambunting. To the Committee on Rules. House Resolution 2584, expressing the deep sense of appreciation of the House for the immense contribution of Susan Rosas to Philippine arts and culture and the development of the entertainment industry, conveying therefore its unanimity in nominating her to be a recipient of the Order of National Artist by Representative Tulfo. To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. House Resolution 2585, commending the Bohol Community Multipurpose Cooperative for its outstanding contribution to community building and cooperative development by Representative Canama. To the Committee on Cooperatives Development. House Resolution 2586, honoring the life and legacy of Susan Rosas and expressing the profound sympathy and sincere condolences of the House on her passing by Representative Torres Gomez. To the Committee on Rules. House Resolution 2587, expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Ms. Jesusa Purificacion Levy Sonora Po, more popularly known as Ms. Susan Rosas, by Representatives Velasco, De Venesia, Maceda, Arroyo, Santos Recto, Ligarda, and other members of the House. To the Committee on Rules. House Resolution 2592, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Rehina Ongshako Reyes Mandanas, former representative of the Lone District of Marinduke during the 16th Congress and the spouse of former representative and incumbent Governor of the Province of Batangas, Hermilando Ay Mandanas. To the Committee on Rules. Charity Leader.
Madam Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading House Bill Number 8559 and Senate Bill Number 2399, respectively, mandating establishment implementation of the parent effective service program. We have been informed that the Committee on Welfare of Children, sponsor of House Bill Number 8559, as well as the authors thereof, is in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number 2399. In accordance with our rules, I move that we adopt Senate Bill Number 2399 as an amendment to House Bill Number 8559. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
For those in favor of the adoption of Senate Bill Number 2399 as an amendment to House Bill Number 8559, say aye.
Aye.
For those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. Senate Bill Number 2399 as amendment to House Bill Number 2559 is hereby adopted. Charity Leader.
Madam Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading House Bill Number 8783 and Senate Bill Number 2423, respectively, strengthening this regulation of private security services industry. We have been informed that the Committee on Public Order and Safety and Security is sponsor of House Bill Number 8783, as well as the authors thereof, is in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number 2423. In accordance with our rules, I move that we adopt Senate Bill Number 2423 as an amendment to House Bill Number 8783. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
For the adoption of Senate Bill Number 2423 as an amendment to House Bill Number 8783, those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. Senate Bill Number 2423 as an amendment to House Bill Number 8783 is hereby adopted. Charity Leader.
Madam Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading House Bill Number 9088 and Senate Bill Number 2490, respectively, is threatening the office of the Government Corporate Council. We have been informed that the Committee on Justice is sponsor of House Bill Number 9088, as well as authors thereof, is in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number 2490. In accordance with our rules, I move that we adopt Senate Bill Number 2490 as amended to House Bill Number 9088. I summon Madam Speaker.
For the adoption of Senate Bill Number 2490 as an amendment to House Bill Number 9088, those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. Senate Bill Number 2490 as an amendment to House Bill Number 9088 is hereby adopted. Charity Leader.
Madam Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading House Bill Number 9175 and Senate Bill Number 2450, respectively, providing for the permanent validity of the certificates of life, birth, death, and marriage issue by the Philippine Statistic Authority. We have been informed that the Committee on Population is sponsor of House Bill Number 9175, as well, the authors thereof, is in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number 2450. In accordance with our rules, I move that we adopt Senate Bill Number 2450 and amended, as an amended to House Bill Number 9175. As a, I move, Madam Speaker.
For the adoption of Senate Bill Number 2450 as an amendment to House Bill Number 9175, those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. Senate Bill Number 2450 as an amendment to House Bill Number 9175 is hereby adopted. Charity Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2587, and for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House Resolution. I summon Madam Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure. House Resolution 2587, a resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives. A resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Jesusa Purificacion Levy Susan Rosas Sonora Po.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move the... I move that we adopt House Resolution 2587 in consolidation with House Resolutions 2583 and 2586. I sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor for the adoption of House Resolution 2587 in consolidation with House Rules... Resolutions 2583 and 2586, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2587 in consolidation with House Resolutions 2583 and 2586 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2592, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Resolution. I sumo, Madam Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2592. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of the Honorable Regina Ong Syaco Reyes Mandanas, former representative of the Lone Legislative District of Marinduke during the 16th Congress and the spouse of former representative and incumbent governor of the province of Batangas, Hermilando Ay. Mandanas.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2592 in consolidation with House Resolution 2568. I sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2592 in consolidation with House Resolution 2568 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider... Consider House Resolution 2505, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution. I sumo, Madam Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2505. Resolution expressing the deepest sympathies of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Angel M. Carloto, former representative of the 3rd Legislative District of Sanbuanga del Norte during the 8th, 9th, 10th, and 12th Congresses.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2506. I sumo, Madam Speaker.
All those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay.
Madam Speaker, uh, Madam Speaker, uh, withdraw my, uh, motion. Instead of 2506, 2505. I sumo.
All those in favor of House Resolution 2505 say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2505 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2506, and for this purpose may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
There any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2506. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Florencio T. Flores Jr., former representative of the 2nd Legislative District of Bukidnon during the 15th, 16th, and 17th Congresses, and the father of Representative Jonathan Keith T. Flores.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2506. I sumo, Madam Speaker.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2506 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2507, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of House Resolution.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2507. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of the Honorable Carlos Ocohuanco, representative of the 1st Legislative District of Tarlac during the 17th and 18th Congresses, and the 4th Legislative District of Negroes Occidental during the 11th, 12th, and 13th Congresses.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2507 in consolidation with House Resolution Numbers 2522 and 2525. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye. Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2507 in consolidation with House Resolutions 2522 and 2525 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2509, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House Resolution. Sumo.
There any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2509. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Ambalang Ausalin, a national living treasure and a recipient of the 2016 Gawad sa manlilikha ng bayan.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2509. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2509 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2539, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House Resolution.
There any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2539. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Antonio Eduardo Bermejo Natura, former representative of the 2nd Legislative District of Samar during the 11th and 12th Congresses and retired Associate Justice of the Supreme Court.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2539 in consolidation with House Resolution 2548. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2539 in consolidation with House Resolution 2548 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2571, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House Resolution.
There any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2571. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives on the passing of Mr. Eduardo Roy Jr.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider... I... I... We adopt House Resolution 2571. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye. Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2571 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2572, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2572. A resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives on the passing of Ms. Gloria Sevilla.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2572. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2572 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2575, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2575. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives on the passing of Mr. Miguel Fostman.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2575. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2575 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2577, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Are there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2577. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives on the passing of Dr. Suzie Moya Benitez.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2577. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2577 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2579, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Are there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2579. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable David Bilarmino Tirol, former representative of the 2nd Legislative District of Bohol during the 8th Congress and member of the Batasang Pambansa from 1984 to 1986.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2579. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye. Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2579 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2580, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 2580 in consolidation with House Resolution 2567.
House Resolution 2580. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Marisol Tutsconejos Panotes, representative of the 2nd Legislative District of Camarines Norte during the 17th and 18th Congresses.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2580 in consolidation with House Resolution 2567. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye. Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2580 in consolidation with House Resolution 2567 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 2581, and for this purpose may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Are there any objections? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the said measure.
House Resolution 2581. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Jesús Emanuel Jes. M. Parás, former representative of the 1st Legislative District of Bukidnon during the 15th Congress.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 2581. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Those who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 2581 is hereby adopted.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the conversion of the Special Committee on the North... of the North Luzon Growth Quadrangle to a standing committee. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
There any objection? The Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until 10:00 AM Thursday, May 26, 2022. Sumo, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Session is adjourned until Thursday, May 26 at 10:00 AM.